Well, I mean, it certainly would help to get more than that. That would be less that we would have to worry about funding next year. But if we order the truck, they will order the bed with it. So it's not just a sixty thousand dollar purchase, it's a sixty nine thousand dollar purchase.
You need six thousand more.
Yeah, that's, that's absolute bare bones minimum that I need in order to be able to function and give the, the county the services that we're, we're accustomed to giving the county. And like I said, that would, that would equate to, um, well, roughly about fifteen thousand dollars that we would be requesting the following year to cover the, the rest of the equipment. Now, keep in mind, as things, every year, things go more and more expensive. So, you know, we, we may be paying more for it next year. But absolute minimum, we, we've got to have the, the truck and the bed covered so we can get that replaced.
So, so the state owns the trucks, so?
They do, yes.
Like you did on one end, and then we did go back to the other?
Uh, generally speaking, so, so those trucks, um, if they are still serviceable and we don't have a need in our county for them, they go to our district office, and then if there's a need within the district, they pick it up and use it there. If it's not, it's generally surplus to, uh, to be sold off. Uh, we, we do have the ability to sell it to the county at a reduced cost because y'all paid for forty percent of it. But that's, that's the way things work, yeah.
Can that, that be it not come off your old truck and move on to a new truck?
So ordinarily, it could, um, but my old truck was a duly flatbed. The new truck, they don't allow us to buy duly flatbeds anymore. It's a single rear wheel with a six foot mechanic's bed. And so the bed wouldn't be transferable, wouldn't fit on the truck. And so that's what we're, that's what we're stuck with.
Looks like it would just be a tad wide for your single wheel to look.
Well, it would be, it would be wide, but it's also a nine foot bed versus a six foot chassis. So you'd be having, you know, five foot.
So you're damn size.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, essentially we are. And that's, that's because of the Forest Service standards. They're standardizing all of our trucks to be the same.
You still haul the same amount of water?
No, no, I, I can't haul near the, near the amount of water or equipment, honestly, that I could with my duly. Yeah. But, uh, but yeah, that's, that's what I've, I need, um. I realize that times are tough and, and budgets are tight. But, um, we, we can survive at that. Um, it would be bare bones to get things situated on the truck. And then, like I said, come back next year requesting the additional funding for the equipment. But once we get this, this second truck outfitted, then, you know, we potentially could go for eight to ten years without requesting another truck. So our budget request would certainly be lower.
Sir, I have a logistic question. I was curious, like when, say for instance, when you're old, you're needing a truck, how does that work? When you purchase, when you make a purchase, purchase agreement, do you pay the whole lump sum? Or you put it on order and then you wait and you get the lump sum, you get it?
The way I understand it is they order it and pay for it at one time. The state of North Carolina. Yeah, so it's, it's purchased through state contract. And we have, uh, equipment managers that manage each region in order to order those trucks. So they, they gather up and order at one time, you know.
So it's not your office, it's the state?
Right, yeah, so it'd be out of our regional offices who would be ordering our trucks, yeah.
I understand you say after you ordered your, uh, new truck, they went up again?
Yeah.
After the order?
Well, it was, it was, uh, it, it wasn't a difference of after the order, but from the time we requested our budget to the time the truck was ordered, it went up. And so that eat into some of our money, um, for last year because it was actually funded the year before. But, uh, but yeah, that's, that's the issue. And, you know, we're looking at a, uh, eight to fourteen month turnaround from the time we order it to the time we receive it. And so ordinarily, what we would do is we would order the truck and all the associated equipment in one budget year. That, that way it hits once, cry once, and, and you have it all there when the truck arrives to get it outfitted and in service.
Yeah, just, uh, I strongly support your, the service that you provide. I want to make sure you know, you know that, just for accuracy sake. So how we looked at it is, he's asking for, with the hundred and ten thousand, that's a nineteen percent increase over what he got last year, which would make it, after fifty-four, uh, budgets that were submitted to us, it would be really in a very close to the top percentage wise. And with the addition of the six thousand dollars, he would be asking for twenty-five percent more than, than last year. So I want you to understand why we said, maybe this is a place that, you know, we can't really fund it completely. It's not a cut to his budget. It's, he's asking for a larger increase than what we had recommended. We will certainly support and make happen whatever you all want to do. And this comment is not meant to sway you from, you know, being solid on what he's trying to say. I just want you to know the thinking behind why he didn't get the entire amount of money at this point.
Right, and, and so just to give an idea of how much things went up, uh, what we had requested initially for the truck that we're currently building right now, the first truck we requested, we, we had been quoted about a fifty thousand dollar price tag on the truck. Well, it's sixty now, so there's ten thousand. But then also with the cost of the tank and the pump and the hose reel went up several hundred dollars each. So we're looking at roughly fifteen thousand dollars more to build this truck than what we had initially quoted the first truck to be built for. Even though we quoted it, then prices went up before we got the, everything finalized and, and ordered. That's why we're seeing an increase more than expected, uh, essentially.
Everybody else got any questions? See what we can work out.
All right, and if, of course, if there's any questions at any time, I can give you the breakdown. I've got figures and stuff on what each costs. But, uh, anything that you can help will certainly help us be able to accomplish things quicker and get it taken care of and everything of that nature. But, but, uh, but I, I do appreciate everything. Thank you very much.
We appreciate what you do.
Yes.
Yeah, so basically, that gives you some of the figures of the different equipment, and that gives you, uh, double needed for the truck right there. Of course, this is all full dollar figures, y'all will be paying for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if I can get that budget back.
Oh, yeah.
Um, we do have one more that's coming in, but she's going to be here at three thirty.
We need to discuss the Forest Service budget or more?
Who is the one more?
Uh, Miranda, Registered Deeds will be in at three thirty.
Earlier today, I, I reached out to Mr. to discuss this, uh, Forest Service budget. And, uh, I think the rest of the board will, uh, agree with this here. Um, all we're really trying to do in this, uh, section of the budget is to be to restore the dues and subscriptions back up to eight hundred and fifty dollars, uh, as they say right now. And to make up for that, the computer service contract, which is, uh, four eighty sixteen hundred two, is at forty-six thousand five hundred dollars. And the actual cost of the contract is twenty-nine and five. So we can make up the difference there.
So what are we talking about?
Registered Dees.
Registered Dees, also Mr. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So we can reduce that line to twenty-nine thousand five hundred?
Just take eight fifty off later.
Chief, chief, they made up is the, the cost of the contract on forty-six five. And then we'll have sixteen left to play with in, in other areas.
So red state to eight fifty for the things?
And reduce the computer service contract to twenty-nine and five to replace the real cost. And use that, allocate that money elsewhere. The savings.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
My guess is, and this is just a guess, but, um, my guess is that, like, I know in her, I think in her third year, the contract price goes up, I think it goes up to that other number. So maybe what happened was it got in the, in the discussions, that projected future piece got put in as opposed to the, what the current one is, yeah. That's a possibility, so.
I do believe those seminars are required.
Pardon me?
I do believe most of those seminars are required.
And this is a good, this program that she wants is going to be, is good for the, for what she needs to do. It's a, it's a solid thing. And, you know, him finding out that there's a difference in, in the contract now, I think this is kind of, to me, a no brainer for us, but we can certainly take that eight fifty out of that.
How's Board field out there?
Yeah, it's fine.
Are you good with it? I'll tell you the truth, I couldn't hear what, what you were saying.
We're saving money.
Yes, yes.
Garrett's claimed the, the equipment contract deal again. Computer service.
You want to do this, let Garrett?
This, uh, which you had, Registered Dees.
Here, Garrett.
It would have helped if that would have been normal.
So this, uh, it's right after GIS.
After who?
After GIS.
Registered Dees.
So this number, dues and subscriptions were listed at eight hundred and fifty dollars in the previous budget, but it was at zero in the proposed. But this line right here for the computer service contract was forty-six thousand five hundred, but the real cost is twenty-nine and five, so.
This is a misprint?
Correct. Well, so the real cost was twenty-nine and five, so we need to amend that so we can use the, the overage there to give that eight fifty back and use those funds elsewhere. There's about sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars left over after that.
Is that a misprint?
Uh, no, that's what, uh, Mr. submitted was forty-six five. And she had a note that this was an increase in cost from the vendor. But I think after all of that happened, she changed it. Correct.
I think they realized cost savings with the new vendor, right?
Yeah.
So she's good with this change?
Yeah, yes.
If she's good with it, I'm good with it.
She's good with it.
Kevin, good, great, you're good. Very close, dude.
Yes, sir.
That freed up six hundred thousand, huh? Everybody's after that, we'll move over to kitchen and meals. My way, yeah, no, excuse me. Let's go back to jail, that's where we stopped there yesterday.
Well, we had a making with law enforcement yesterday. So now that we have found this sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, uh, law enforcement was asking for fifteen thousand more, I believe.
And you got law enforcement worked out?
We do down something like?
Twenty.
We had part of it worked out now.
We can use that saved fifteen thousand dollars to pay the, um, overtime that Sheriff's Office.
But the Sheriff's Office is good with this new?
From, yes, from what, yes, from our discussions, I would, you know, I would say yes. And that's why he's not here today, he felt comfortable with.
Does that give us how many SRO officers? And how, how is he working that out if one of them's sick, wrong vacation? Who covers?
Can you answer that, Garrett? So, yeah, go ahead.
Like I said, that the day is, they move people around. So if they have, if they have somebody that's not, that's not going to be there for a day, they move another day. And Shane shared with me that they do not have to have special training to pull us, this a deputy off the road one day to go be there. And they were doing a good job of that this past year. So they do not need an extra SRO officer. Matter of fact, they never asked for one on the budget, so they've got that clear.
But they do need special training if they're going to be a permanent SRO officer.
I don't think it's law, but that's what the Sheriff's Department does, that they do put them through, uh, different training if they're going to be there permanently, yes.
Well, we've had to pay for special training in the past. So they can rotate Joe Blow from this school to that school. So there's always going to be an SRO officer.
He also said that they could use some part-time deputies, uh, whether it's semi-retired people.
Yeah.
So I think they, they've reworked that this past few months, and it's worked out really well. And as we see, they did not ask for another SRO position.
Cause it, towards the end of last year, we had several complaints from parents that the schools were not being covered. But this budget and what the Sheriff's Department's worked out, they guaranteed that it'll be an SRO, or there'll be a deputy at each school, okay?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that, that pretty much covers the, the, the meeting that was, uh, yesterday. There was tw- twenty thousand dollar increase, twenty thousand dollar increase to overtime in their budget. And then, uh, the insurance and overtime for the jail for a combined amount, thirty-five to forty thousand. So that helps, uh, that will help train some of those people that may have to be there a little bit longer and do the special trainings for the school too. So that, that helps them in that area, like, uh, just the one you were mentioning.
Any other questions about Joe's budget there? I think everybody's up to here though. Do you want to move on over to Martin Sebastian?
You're saying everything's taken care of?
What else?
Well, we've got to find that money to, I mean, we, I think we have the, the understanding of what's needed for the table. Um, he wanted five one thousand in the overtime. And then if we go down to liability with hospital inmate insurance, that amount was left out of the budget. There was a request at eleven three sixty-one, but he's actually asking fifteen thousand. Because I think he missed that.
So we need twenty thousand more in jail budget tomorrow?
We just got to keep that in mind. I guess, I think we have the understanding that will need all of the needs, so we may have to run that one.
I, I think it's important, uh, to note that when we met, when we had that meeting yesterday, that, uh, Chief Deputy Glenn indicated that we would have to, uh, do some transferring in their own budget to finish paying out the rest of the year for their, for their insurance. So they're, they're seeing an increased cost, uh, for, for the inmate, inmate insurance. And that's something that we're going to have to figure out how to fund. I think we got to have, we definitely have to have insurance for the inmates. Yes. I'm, I'm pretty certain that's a requirement.
Yeah, that's correct. That actual lineup of the state administration budget, I think it's transferred to jail.
So, you know, anybody else?
We still need twenty thousand for jail. What was, well, we have sixteen there, but we also have twenty thousand for the Sheriff's Department overtime too. That was the twenty thousand for overtime in the Sheriff's Department and twenty thousand in the jail.
My suggestion, I'm just going to put on assistant emergency manager for Daniel, but you all have that much, but. So I figured jail needs to always need assistant emergency manager.
The six, the savings that we got, we're doing the, uh.
Um, right now, all of that is split into overtime and the Sheriff's Department.
The Sheriff's Department, that took here fifteen.
So we still need twenty five?
For Sheriff's Department?
Between the Sheriff's Department and the.
Glenn, how much do we budget for the assistant for Danny?
Uh, we'll get to his budget here.
Yeah, I think Sheriff's Department needs to go with you, the assistant emergency manager.
Okay, emergency manager, next step.
So there are more questions about?
Everybody sleep foundation, so tell me something more.
So, yeah, emergency manager, that's his name.
Under emergency manager? What, what's the grant expense of five thousand?
Um, that is just a pass word. It's a grant that he's going to receive for different supplies and that is, it's reimbursable.
Is this a one-time grant or?
Yeah, it's not something that he gets redeemed.
So how much do we budget in for assistance for that?
Force the ball, very young, very assistant.
And this budget, it starts in what, January? Is that correct?
That's correct.
There should be six months.
It was forty-two thousand was the request.
So you take that right there for jail. We got to cut, forty-two, we're going to need twenty-five thousand for jail, Sheriff's Department.
So our conversation with him was, was couple, it was typical. Number one, he's the only emergency management person on staff. He's the only one that's trained and handled some of these situations. And it takes several years to get to that point, be able to handle these situations with emergency. And with the earthquake, with the flooding, with all of this, we don't have a backup person. So what if Daniel is injured or what if he was killed? This is kind of just preparing for the future. Also, this person could be trained as backup to this project.
Can come to dispatch?
That would be training as backup. So that's where the conversation started.
I understand, I checked on some other counties this size too, and then you got them. I know we've had two disasters here in five, six years, but we never had one of them.
So this number that's punched in for this assistant manager, um, emergency manager person, is just enough to pay for him for a half a year, so it's not, it's not the whole year?
In the, in the, we haven't been, five months that I've been here. I, Daniel has been someone that doesn't come to us and ask us for something. He stretches things and tries to do everything he can with, with what he's got. I, I feel, I'm supported by this quest.
So who is the, Daniel, like if this bird wants to ease out or who is the next person in line that would be answering any questions or heading up?
We call Daniel.
You call Andrew, you can call Jake.
Maybe he's talking to Mike too.
Yeah, so there's nobody really, there's nobody really to reach out to.
Not really, because, well, you know, you have me. But I don't have all of the certificates and training for emergency management either. Uh, even though I've been doing this for quite a number of years. Um, you have me, but we'd call Daniel.
And that's what, if, if there's something pops up that's, needs to be like a semi-emergency type thing, for me, it's either or.
I think we get by until next year, take that six months, how do you, you know, get to jail and Sheriff's Department. Next year, we can go back.
I would, I would ask that you think about letting us, I mean, I'd like to get that money restored to jail. Ask you guys to let us, pardon me? Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like, if you guys could let us creatively go through and say, okay, is there another place that we could take it from that you would feel, you would feel comfortable with? And if we, if there's not, then come back to that.
Would that work for you?
It would.
Okay.
Everybody have a left proposal? Garrett? All right. Moving all over to the building space. What's the biggest thing for you?
Any model I'd be, to give it involved?
There, when we had our emergency weapons, it was not even a bad.
Was it car or a truck? That's why we had to pick that up.
Call Toyota pickup.
They should run that hundred thousand.
Four, Toyota.
What was the, for the last few years, the holiday approach that they get along with the inspection department to have? Every so many years, just to try to change them out, do something else, do you remember?
We've got a good place to do it.
I don't.
I don't do that.
I mean, we keep the service record.
Yes, yes, we keep the service record in shock. Yes.
Around the hundred and twenty thousand mark that you started getting a little concerned, accurate?
That's accurate.
We've got a good place to do this and go. We need to do. Parks and Parks.
Exactly for four Rangers, it's two thousand seventeen, and it has more than ninety-five thousand on it when we met with him. So, um, he got a quote off state contract for Rangers, for the drive. Um, so by the time he wanted to order it and get it here, I mean, we just heard that a lot of that is behind him. Um, it would probably have a hundred and twenty hundred worth of money behind it.
Probably.
That's just the thought process.
Well, this, this old truck's a good truck, it looks good. We can certainly reuse it in another part of the, that part, kept that out too.
So if we go another year.
Hey, hey, Travis puts a lot of miles going from one end of the county to the other, inspecting jobs. And then he has no choice but to put miles.
More than officer, yeah?
Any more questions? Four-wheel drive, you said? And they're, they're priced at a Ranger.
At least you can have one good vehicle.
I'm sure of what you're getting there? I'm sure of one.
I think, I think that truck's good for good, simply get a lot of the use out of this and then move it on up.
We've got, we've got some trucks that needs to be replaced. We've got one that's folding up in the maintenance department, another one that antifreeze, we have an intake gasket, I think is probably bad, so it's drinking antifreeze. Randy's trucks is, one of them's older and the other one's a little bit newer, but we've, we've got some places we could use it.
How about Don, Don's truck?
Yeah, Don's truck's the one that's using antifreeze.
Okay.
The, that, that whole section of the department that's bringing crops is big. Yeah, but it's been passed.
Yeah.
Everybody good for building inspector? Moving all over the health department.
So this portion of the health department is actually in the county's responsibility, so that's estimate on new technicals and that's the estimate. We pay our new technicals and that's what we do. And then the medical examiner comes, that is something that it's out of my hands, basically.
It fluctuates?
It fluctuates, it sure does. Yeah, I went with the estimate of where we're at this year, because the big expense in this is actually all parts of the council here in the county with medical examiner. Redneons, and David's right here, he can answer any questions about it, but it does fluctuate with medical examiner. It's a big.
Any questions? Yes. There's not much you can question, there are. Well, we're giving y'all, I guess. Moving all over EMS.
So. I'm pretty good with what is proposed right now. We are in need of a, another ambulance to be remounted, but I feel like we could wait a year on that. We do have in there a sizable sum for the lease program from Stryker. This program includes new monitors, new lift systems for the trucks, new stair chairs, new Lucas devices. And those things so that we can outfit all four trucks and have them ready to go in a moment's notice. So all we'd have to do is put drugs on them, so.
The work that David and his team do on analyzing the benefits of the, of the Stryker was excellent. And it was, it was the kind of thing, like I usually think, don't, don't want to think in terms of leasing. But in this case, it's because the equipment becomes outdated so quickly and the, and the contract involves them bringing in new equipment before the end of the contract. And to me, it was, I was sold on it, on the approach that he has, and he's done very well.
When you look at the monitors, the new monitors now are over fifty thousand dollars each, so to buy five monitors, you're at a quarter million dollars. The ones we have, it's, it's recommended every five to, to ten years that you change them out, and ours is nine.
And nine?
Ours is nine years old now.
Aren't they refurbished?
You, you can refurbish them, but at the same time, it goes by the manufactured date.
And are all of them able to carry very heavy weight in people?
The stretchers that we have were rated at eight hundred pounds. The lift systems would assist the, our people in putting patients into the ambulance itself. Eight hundred pounds, i- if you get a person who is heavy, you put them on that stretcher, even though the stretcher will bear the weight. Somebody has to actually physically put them in the back of the truck. That's why in EMS world, back injuries is the most prevalent thing to cause workers' comp claims. So we're looking at, at trying to protect our people and trying to protect the county from liability.
I know a few years back, we had some people that were seven, eight hundred pounds. And we didn't have the proper equipment then, and we, and it was expensive, yet the stretchers.
Yes, yes.
But all, all of them now?
All of our stretchers are eight hundred pound stretchers. But the way we have it now is that we have to physically put them in the back of the truck. Even though they're electric stretchers, you still got to lift them and push them into the back of the truck. The, the lift system will raise it up, and then you, it's, it's on a glide system, and you, it is, is nothing to push somebody into the back of the truck and lock it in place. And these, these locking devices are now required for those things, for ambulances, for safety of the patients.
I got a good question. Then our medical costs, is that movement supplies?
Yes, sir.
That don't seem like a lot for a year. And a week, I mean.
Well.
You don't have help from hospital, which.
No, sir. No, sir, we don't. We're increasing it twenty five hundred dollars. This year, this year, right now, I'm in the red on that line. So I'm, I'm gonna have to find about five thousand dollars somewhere to add to that line. My invoice is that I can't. Overdrawn. So, you know. We, we still have some things we have to do, but twenty five hundred dollar increase will give us a little better outlook on that.
Anybody got more questions? We've moved, we're moving all over. How many buildings are built? Like overall, about fifteen thousand.
Increase that. It's a big increase. I'll just start out with. They got an increase of three thousand dollars in salaries?
No, I couldn't address that.
Huh?
When we, no, when we first took over the BDC, it was mid-year, remember, it was like September or October or something like that? And we had two lines already set up in the budget that we were taking to and from, basically revenue spaces. So last year was the first year that we actually set up this budget with a detail for the business facilities. In the rollover of the budget last year, that salary kept coming out of that old line. So that is not current, that's what's come out this year, but that's not current.
It, it's not an increase?
No, it is not.
Just from last year?
Yeah, it's just the way everything posted last year, and the rollover we looked at.
We can increase, I see utilities, don't you probably press that, is that all you proclaim labor?
Um, no, that, that's just, that's just electrical and, and phone lines and, and those things. We've had a little bit of an increase in, in the amount of energy that's being used. And there's been a little bit of an increase in price and cost. So with those things together, we've had to move money around this year in order to cover the utilities costs.
That's exactly. Utilities, that covers library and college and just BDC?
No, that's just the BDC.
How much money are we taking in at BDC?
I don't know, it's just about thousand.
Six thousand or seven thousand a year?
Oh, it's purple, I think, that was an occupancy over there for BDC.
I do not know, David.
It's close to beautiful.
I remember before, they were up rent increasing more from what the, people she was back near the back.
But I will throw something else in here. David's budget in public works to secure most of the utilities from the citizens. But it's a team, those utilities separate, gives you a true cost for the BDC, and it takes it out of the photo also. So if we need to go back and we need to pull information for a true cost for the BDC, we can do it each year, having this for them.
So when we take in our rents, take yours on total here?
For the total that's represented, yes.
Good, good, actually, profit's over, it's a problem, overspend. What makes it? We're still on the bridge and takes back.
Something's wrong with it. I mean, two years ago, we didn't get nothing out of it.
And she did ask for some additional painting to be done, and a couple of things.
Yeah, there, there was a couple of things that needs to be addressed and dressed a little bit.
Some painting that needs to be done where there's places on some walls and some things like that.
Or there's a little, there's a place or two, or that they was wanting to fix up, just to make it a little more attractive and. I know it's aesthetics, but you make the people feel good about what they're renting, they're renting.
Well, this is a review, I mean, six thousand dollars. Let's move along to you. What, what do you speak?
And I do have the actual cost on this chart, so utilities is actually a ten five right now, and we've got about thirty one minutes to go.
Did the rent go up any at the BDC for the people, the rent rooms built?
What the board did last year with the, with the adjustments is the only increase that I'm aware of, but there was a little bit of increase last year.
At like fifteen dollars a month.
Yeah, it wasn't a tremendous.
Then the security is in, is gone to twenty six hundred? What does that cover?
Security.
That, that is, that is where they've increased the, the, it's security over there, that, that, they're printing cards and, and gaining, the gain access into that, you have to have a card. That it belongs to them, the individual person. I, I have one that belongs to me, it has my picture on it, and nobody else can use my card. So the, that's an expense for that, making the place more secure. They put in the doors that allow for them to lock it completely down in the event of some type of disaster or hazard or whatever it may be, active shooter. Any kind of situation you think of, they have that now so that it can lock that down. All that has been tied into the new fire alarm system. We wound up having to replace the fire alarm system this year as well. But all that's tied in, and that's the increased cost for, for those things.
I thought with the money that the BD, the old board had, that they were paying for all these upgrades.
They paid for the upgrades, but there is a continued cost that is associated with that.
And we're picking that up. Do they still have money in their fund that they have held for years and years?
I, I cannot answer that question, I am not sure.
I do not know.
You know, I, I think we need to find out if they spent that, it was thousands and thousands of dollars that they had. I'm just curious.
We'll look in, we'll look into it.
So when you use the word security, we're not talking about somebody like SRO's equipment?
Yes, yes, new cameras, the new cameras, all that stuff was, was redone and, and there was some advancements made in, in the abilities of the security system there.
These are saying these microphones here are working, so I'm on my best number, maybe great. These two ain't working. What are you saying? Neither one of these.
They're. They're there.
We're ready for call up. Extension agents.
There was nothing.
We're ready to move on.
Yeah. So on the salaries and wages on the extension agency, now they. Is that the raise they get, the four oh one, four hundred one dollars, or, or do, are they getting any?
They are getting a raise, but the way they're, they're bringing them.
I know the state helps.
Yeah, and we pay a percentage of each person.
Right.
So a couple of them are like twenty five percent, and a couple of them are like fifty percent. There is a spreadsheet that has breaks.
But they, but they're getting the same thing as all the other employees.
Now, the state, they are the ones deciding factor on that.
Okay.
So I don't.
We just do four percent on what we pay them, right?
Yeah, to the state, I think, I think. The state, we're taking on tell what percentage they gotta be.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, you could, no, at least in Virginia. Let's say that the state said, they're gonna get three percent. Well, let's, let's say that you all decide, do you want to support four percent for our employees? Unless, unless it's different in North Carolina, if you all want it to, you could say, let's cover that one percent, so that everybody's the same. If you wanted to do that. You wouldn't be required to do it.
What is the state, did the state propose any kind of ways to better, do you know?
At this point?
I'm looking at. The ones that would be it for what Amy caused title promotion is four percent increase. So that, that would follow along with ours. Like Amy, Eric Gray, and Shale, it's split between the county and state. Now, that's just the salaries and the benefits. Brad Edwards is twelve and a half percent, Harmon is thirty three and a quarter, and Jill, which is the, the food coordinator, she's thirty three percent. And I can, I can test this stand, so you can kind of see. It's just a lump sum.
That percent is what?
I, the percentage is just that we pay on each one of them, yeah.
Okay.
And it's just a lump sum figure. They're actually paid to stay on the front line, well, NC State, actually, and we just. We have a EMT that comes out each month.
Now, when they retire, does the state pay their salary at retirement or?
Yeah, the state.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not a true county board, they're.
We just put, yeah, we just put the percentage, you know, yeah.
They follow our personnel policies and, and things like that, but they are paid directly from the state.
They're a great team. Work very well with everybody.
But I will say, their, their retirement rate is much higher than what the government is, it's like twenty four point six percent. That is figured, and that is figured, but we don't have to pay all of that.
Anything else, what we can say? Everybody good? All right. Moving on up to Soulwood. No question.
Have you got that budget back?
What's the difference on the salary there, maybe? I just put one seventy dollars.
Well, since we've had a resignation in Soulwood, and we know now that she's gonna be gone by July one, or that's what I was talking about, HR. I did refigure that salary, and the new hire coming in will be less than the killer that's resigned. So I did go back and refigured that.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
If this is someone to break down to cooperate with, we find out.
We find out.
Thank you.
Great, Kim, any questions?
I'm good.
Question, answer. No question. Everybody good?
Yeah, good.
Moving all over transportation.
Now, there's, there's two parts to. Now, there's, there's two parts to transportation, just for a little bit of education. This is the administrative part of transportation that's supported by North Carolina DOT. So there is, I'm switching the room, just a second. There is a portion, a big portion of that, that is paid for by BRI and North Carolina DOT. A hundred and two thousand four eighty-four is funded at that budget. That portion.
Any questions?
Nope.
Great. Here's a call. Moving on over to social services.
And our, our meeting on Tuesday, and we talked about social services, and I'm gonna start with. Stacy and I actually have it worked out, about seventy-nine thousand for their attorney's fees. The one that I had in blue, the special adoption assistance that we actually talked about, would be rollover money. There's a portion of that that needs to be represented on the other side, because that is rollover money. And if you take right at sixty percent, about one thirty-two, five fifty-six, that's your seventy-nine thousand. So that's what, I have talked to Stacy about that today, we emailed back before. She understands what I'm doing, I understand, you know. She just wanna make sure that money's available to you. But that will correct that. And some of the attorney's fees, she did say were reimbursed. That was one of my questions also, so she confirmed that in the afternoon.
So that, that won't change the bottom line then, I guess.
Um, it actually will change the bottom line, because what I'm gonna do is I'm taking about sixty percent of that one thirty-two, five fifty-six, and we're gonna put it on the other side with the public assistance revenue.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So that's what we're gonna do in that budget.
But you'll make the change when you give us this, our next go around with the budget.
Everything will be, well, if we finalize and everybody's good with it, when we get to the budget ordinance and to the public hearing and everything, everything's gonna be settled with what, what's been decided.
The budget changes.
We're glad to work that.
Yes.
Satisfied with both sides?
Yeah.
No more questions? Here. Great, Kenny?
Yep.
Okay, moving on over, county insurance. Anybody have any questions?
Do you remember offhand how many longer loan payments we have left?
Um, I have two.
It should be. We shouldn't have a whole lot left.
We don't have many years left. We have two years left on the longer one. So.
So that includes this year?
That will include this year.
So this one, one more?
This one that we're, that we're discussing is what I'm saying.
And then? And then two more. One more.
Oh, it's out in twenty twenty-six.
No, it goes out in twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
And when I'm referencing this one, I, I'm talking about the one that, that we're proposing and looking at now.
Talking about actually July.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. And the interest that we're paying, that's on all of our?
That is, and the increase in that interest is, is the high school one.
The new one?
Yes.
What, what's our most expensive interest that we're, what loan?
The high school.
And that's what percentage?
Um, it ended up at four point thirty.
Four point thirty?
Yeah.
Are we still paying, do we have any that are at one or zero?
Yeah, we have ones that's zero, the library loan is zero, because it is actually the Blue Ridge loan that Mr. Shepherd was talking about on Tuesday.
These loans that we're shedding, like the loan payments, is it just different times of the next budget year? We're, we're, the whole total year, we're gonna get rid of, we're not gonna use. So in other words, we're getting rid of those three loans this coming budget year?
Yes.
That's really good.
Um, we have a Q Z A loan that has no interest, which is Sparta Elementary School, the two thousand seventeen one, it's no interest.
And then we have a couple that are in the three, two and three.
Two point five one, three point oh seven, and then four point three, that's, that's the most expensive one.
So you got about three point something average.
Yeah.
Just looking at that one. Is there, is there limits on what Blue Ridge Energy Loans? Dollar value?
I do not know.
I'll be finding that out pretty soon when they come for the.
I mean, that's a lot of difference in industry if we can borrow loans from over there. I don't know what that's doing with that size of money, but.
So we're, right now, we're looking at paying two hundred ninety-one thousand in interest. As of right now.
Yes. This section of our budget is one of the biggest changes.
And almost all of those, how many of those loans are school loan?
Counting the high school, three.
Three of them are still on the school.
Yes.
Any other questions?
No.
So Mr. Shepherd, you check on that, if they have alignment?
Sure.
No other questions, then move on over to special appropriations.
And education is between that and special appropriations, do you have any questions about that?
Or?
Education.
They're very bottom, that's what I'm saying.
If you have any questions, I believe we've already kind of remedied it.
Good question.
The increase to the Chamber of Commerce is twenty-eight thousand?
It's still over here.
I thought we'd all be good.
Well, yeah, we backed back up. No further questions, we will move on over. Everybody good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. All right, move on over to special appropriations. Be a good time, dude, though. Let's take a five minute.
Yes.
When would you get that tip out?
I'll have it for a while. Me and my brother, me and grandson traded.
Take a dip on it, say the circle one.
I just write one every few days.
Take a break.
Uh, Dan is saying he's jubilating, he'd say, face a winner circle.
Please, sir, don't.
That was his saying.
No, we're fine.
Look at her. I'm bothered, I turned on down a little bit, cool it off.
It's hot.
He hit three of the people's statements. Yes, sir. They said he entered the people's statement. My son was, stood in last. I've not talked to him today.
Sorry.
So, but I will, I will get back in with him by tomorrow. He said some nice words. None of his people.
Do we know what's wrong?
I'm, I'm. I would guess that there's a. As soon as I can get those statements, then I'll. I'm pretty much. I know they've recently switched over the stand in the back, switched to the microphone.
We got a lot better audio than got over here.
Yeah.
It's down.
I couldn't get the. Time base. The two. It's such a fancy system.
Well, you know, you're always, that's something, you too, I have a hard time understanding.
His dad is the director. Jason. Just need to, not that are flashing, but are currently working. But our two Bluetooth speaker mics are. I'm like, okay. I mean, that one should pick up, you talk very loud. It's like over there, that might try to pick me up everybody.
Right.
It's working, it sounds comfortable.
Good day. That's my point.
That's right, absolutely.
Who's in the rig after a guest like that?
I do not know what the name of the person was, they was hurt pretty bad.
Older feller, wasn't it?
It was, an older feller, he had a, I know he had a femur fracture that was not open, but didn't like much. A few other injuries that worked at him taking a helicopter flight. Not to mention that it was a thirty-minute extrication, so, you know, the guideline on that is twenty minutes, so. But yeah, he was hurt pretty bad, but I did not know what's.
What it is, what happened, was somebody crosses that line?
Um, I think the other vehicle, according to what I understand, may have hydroplanted.
Well, it did, it's raining, yes.
Yeah.
Looks like Christmas in here.
It does.
Blasting lights everywhere.
David, we're gonna try to have a facilities meeting at the courthouse Monday after our meeting.
Okay.
Yes, I agree.
That one was not on.
After the meeting Monday morning?
Sometime after meeting, no, we hadn't set a time, Timmy was gonna check his calendar, and I gotta check with Judge Dalton.
I'm probably good about any time. I'm probably good about any time.
I don't think it'll take long.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Oh, if, if you think of it, bring the key to that little, to the old elegant news.
Yeah.
I don't, Mark said he didn't know who had a key to it.
I'll try to find one.
Hammer.
I can get in it.
Knock it out.
I can get in it.
There's nothing in there.
No, there's nothing in there for a lot of anything. And it was unlocked, and I don't know who locked it, but I will, I will look for, I have, I have a lot of keys that I have no idea what they go to. One of them could do that.
That was all that was coming along, I noticed it wasn't in there, but.
No, they actually got everything, pulled it on to yesterday.
Well, good.
They pulled, of course, the high school, they're going through the fine tooth comb. And the grant that, that the town, that were administered to the town, that, that was two of the things that were going through yesterday. Um, and at the end of the day, they didn't have but a few questions, and they said, we can send y'all emails and we can get the rest of the initial paperwork done.
Sounds like one of them did.
I think it went fine. Um, but they'll be back in late August or early September, and then they'll finish that.
We get that report about December for the year, right?
Yes. They usually present it in the second meeting in December.
Did they get what you need from the fire department yet?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, and I know David Higgins was in here the other day when we were in here looking for me, and I don't, I don't. We had a conversation during the budget meetings, and they said they were gonna get it around here, and it's still happening.
So when's the deadline they're supposed to have it in?
I would say due right first. I mean, if they're here to provide this, quite the work this stuff. The consensus is kind of, they're not giving money, because that's, that's in their current contract.
It's very little asked of them, to be hon, to be honest with you, all the different things that we gotta deal with and figure out. All they have to do is take care of their one little budget and try to get it to us. And, and it's, as can the taxpayers, we need something, we just can't free will it. You know, because they're getting tax, tax money. And, you know, it's just part of it, you gotta be accountable for what you spent. It's as simple as that.
Which area was that? Yeah. Yeah, they gotta, they better move up to the same standard as all the other.
Yep.
Departments there. We're ready to go. Before we call it back to order for all special appropriations. Anybody have any questions?
I do, Chamber of Commerce.
Go ahead.
They, they were asking for a increase, how much?
The actual request was forty thousand.
What are their plans for this twenty-eight thousand dollar increase? And why should we be funding, going back to the old system, of funding this organization?
Tyler, Mr. Shepherd, there's, because he's, he's had some meetings with Larry Matthews and the directors.
I mean, over the years, we've tried to rein ourselves, you know, from some of these special appropriations. And now they're getting an extremely large boost.
What was their ask? Do you know, it was forty?
Yeah.
And they, they, what, two years ago, it was around forty? And the year before that, it was, you know, around, I, I'm a huge fan and supporter of Chamber of Commerce. And think that we've got a great leader in place right now, and I think that the Chamber of Commerce has done, I think of it as a person that comes to Sparta because I love the town and love the, love the county. And I think that, um, the Chamber of Commerce has done a great job in reaching out to people, making the county, the town and the county into a place where, you know, people wanna visit, and so I, I'm, I'm supportive of the request.
Question I got on is, I seen them advertising in Galax the other day, Alagany Chamber of Commerce, go business down there. It's on their Facebook.
Advertising for a business?
Yeah.
I believe that other businesses, if they have connections to the county, can be a member.
Yeah, they probably have a.
I just wondered what that was.
Yeah, sure.
So you're saying the business in Galax got a connection in the camp?
If they pay a membership. If they pay their dues and that they're a member of the Chamber.
If they pay their dues and if they're a member of the chamber, then they're, then they're members of our chamber.
So it really doesn't matter where we locate. Is that what you're saying? So.
Yeah.
Business in Galax could pay a membership to our Chamber of Commerce and be a member. That may answer your question.
Looks to me like the Chamber sending money out, out of county, so.
I just think that's an extremely large increase. Our chamber over the years, we've spent a lot of money and gotten very little results out of this chamber. They change their. They change their leadership every two, three years. There's no consistency. Uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars is, is a no-go for me. I, you know, I was looking at coming down another five thousand on what we were given.
Well, I'm, I'm with the county manager. I think they do a good job and you've got a good guy up there. Not saying we can have some, but here's a little bit. This just came to note yesterday. Larry.
Ben Heskey.
Yes.
Anyway, for the ag fair PBS, just con- just confirmed this yesterday, if they'll be here in the county, filling the fair. And go and put it on PBS on TV. I mean, that's a big plus for, that's a big plus for Sparta. And he is one responsible for that. Him and Johnny Witsch on maybe they call. And this week. You remember that magazine's gonna be here? Southern.
Southern linens?
Maybe. But there's a big magazine.
Our state.
Our state.
Our state, that's it.
Yeah, our state.
They're here this week, filling for our state magazine. I mean, they do a lot of work. I don't know how you put a dollar value on some of it. I do recollect years back to four, five years ago, we used to give about forty-five, fifty thousand dollars. It was, it was the old authentically Allegheny. Money. And then we got in this configuration of. Two dollars and seventy cent per ratio population, which come up to about twenty-seven, five. Am I correct on that? Pretty close. And we reinstated money for two or three years to support their calls right there. And I do think you got a good guy at the helm up there.
As far as I'm concerned, we've got nothing. Now, the percentage wise, how much of a raise is this?
What, what are they getting?
Calculator.
What did they get in from TDA? Cause I know a, a part of the occupancy tax goes to them.
They get thirty-two five.
Thirty-two percent?
No, we're talking about TDA.
Thirty-two thousand five hundred from TDA.
No, I'm, I'm asking what this.
Percentage.
Percentage of the raise is.
About seventy-four percent.
Seventy-four percent. And we've asked all of our departments to cut their budgets by two or three or four percent.
That's not correct.
We've asked them. You told me.
Yeah, I told you that we.
At three percent.
Now, the accurate, the accurate way to say it is that we asked them to cut three percent from their ask.
Yeah.
Not from their budget. Their budget doesn't exist. That's right.
Yeah.
But what you have to take into account in this particular case is. You can't just take one year and say, okay, it's seventy-two percent. You have to look at what, I mean, for the, this is, the unusual year was last year. The drop to ten percent, I mean, the ten thousand. So, you know, it was like forty thousand before that and around forty, in the thirties and forties. For several years and then all of a sudden it dropped down to ten. And what I'm, what I'm recommending is to restore it to, basically to where it was. It's not an in- increase when you look at the last three or four year period.
It's an increase on this paper.
That's right.
Seventy-four percent. I don't know if anybody else is getting, there may be somebody getting that big of a raise that I didn't see.
Well, I, I believe that the cut to ten thousand dollars was a mistake. And I'm trying to correct what I believe is a mistake. And that's why I'm recommending this.
Okay.
Look at the decrease, the major decreases they've had for the last three or four years. If, if we're looking at seventy-four percent. That's what they've been cut. Well, I, I tell you my take on it. I think the TDA, the chamber, those several organizations that contribute to the success of Allegheny County. I think it's a group team. Team effort myself, that, that the way we look at it. Anyway, anybody got any more questions?
I would make a comment, but I'm, I'm on that board. I've been on that board for six years, so I'm not gonna make a comment.
Okay. Anybody else got any, just any question, Greg? Timmy?
No.
Or contingency department?
No, no, I've, I've still got questions.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Rescue squad. What percentage increase is that?
It's fifty.
Fifty?
Yeah. No, it's essentially a thirty-five percent increase.
How much?
Thirty-five.
So what, what was their ask?
And what's their justification for thirty-five percent increase?
Well, their ask, I believe, was a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
It was.
But, I mean, every year for, they've asked for a tremendous amount of money.
And we gave them ninety thousand dollars.
How many, I just curious. What they're gonna do with the thirty-five percent increase?
Well, they got a new truck ordered for one thing.
The what?
A new truck is coming for one thing.
What's their fund balance?
One.
One sixty-six.
Sixty-five or something like that.
Little less than two hundred thousand.
About a hundred fifty-six.
How many calls did they actually go on? Not standby, they actually go on this year. How many services have they quit in the last five years? As to some of their certifications? And have they not gone from a totally volunteer to they pay? A couple of employees? So they're no longer a totally volunteer organization? Is that not correct?
Don't they pay two employees? They can.
I didn't believe they had two.
I think that's what, that's to answer calls while everybody's at work.
So they're no longer volunteers, totally volunteer? And they're looking for a thirty-five percent increase. Have they said what that money will go to?
You got the details on it?
Or does it go to their general fund?
No, it's going, part of us going to buy a truck with. I do know that. Truck, the truck payment. They borrowed the money, borrowed money.
Transports, thirty-seven last year. Events coverage, side by side. Two e-bikes. I mean, this is just my notes. Um, they added a new building. And I talked about, you know, the heavy rescue part of it, because that's really the rescue squad's a heavy rescue. Now, they do backup EMS. And that backup for EMS actually falls under our EMS, correct?
Yes.
So.
What is their area that they cover in the county now?
The entire county.
Whole county.
The whole county.
I thought at one time they were talking about just cutting back to Sparta. So now we have a rescue squad on the verge of being approved in. Uh, Glade Creek?
I'm not sure how close they are.
And one in Laurel Springs? Have they dropped down?
Um, for right now, that is on, uh, uh, hold.
What about the Glade Creek?
It needs to be on hold. I, I am not sure as to their status or how far they have gotten with that.
Didn't they come to us last year and say they were on the verge of being approved?
They've been working towards that, I think, with some of their training and some of their equipment. Um, but I'm not sure as to how far they've gotten with that. I'd have to check and see what their status is as far as becoming a transport.
Okay.
Uh, to answer your question about, they do have two part-time during the day and their goal is to have a paramedic there during the day. That's there.
How much are they paying their part-time?
Their payroll expense represented on this is fifty thousand.
And that includes FICA and everything else if they even get that. I don't know that they do.
Yeah, I, I can pass this down. This is what they turn.
So on the backup, David.
So their fifty thousand that they're asking could be just to cover their employees. I mean, that money wise.
It could be, yes.
And not have anything to do with the equipment. So we're paying somebody, where this county tax dollars is going to pay their salaries, possibly. I'd just like to see a legisley, legis sheet of how they spend their money.
And here's the budget that they filled out.
Yeah, not the budget. I'd like to see all the checks they've written, you know, what they intend to do. At one time, we used to get some, uh, minutes from their meetings, but. I haven't seen any lately.
So on the backup. Uh, like they are the planned backup.
Yes.
Is it required that they back up? They could just say, no, we can't do that for whatever reason?
As far as that goes, no, they can, they can, um, decline to do that.
So it's not required.
If they wish. Um, if, if they, you know, we're, we're trying to assist them in, in helping with the funding. So that they can provide that service for us in the event that our ambulances are, are busy, out of town or whatever. Like the case may be, so that the citizens of Allegheny County still have med- medical coverage. Um, with the addition of some things that we've done at EMS, it's made it a little bit better. They can run an ambulance and it's not necessarily always required that they have a paramedic on board, that we can have one that runs. Uh, during, during the daytime or prime time hours, that, uh, we have a paramedic that can go with them. Uh, that's employed by our, our service. The, the service as far as ambulance, transports, medical, fall under the action plan of EMS.
So I guess my question is, it goes back to my very first budget meeting with the rescue squad. Is, do you feel like the last year, two years or something? Their funding wasn't sufficient enough to, to bring them up to where they could do the neat help that they needed? To, to help them EMS or back them up?
Um, well, without, without seeing a, um. I, I don't, I don't know what their, I don't know what their actual funds and, and all go for. Um, but as far as them backing us up, there has been an increase and a more positive. Uh, outlook on that from the rescue squad to run backup calls and transport for us. Um, over the last couple of years. So we have, we have, um, grown a little closer and have, our relationship has gotten a lot better. And I feel that they provide an adequate service for us as far as backup is concerned. To the best of the abilities and the availability of their personnel.
So you think this, this will go a long ways to, to, to make that relationship and things better to where we can depend on them?
Yes, I, I think it will help. Absolutely.
What's the, what's the case of counties, both Alamos, all Alamos County got's out of the town, can't?
Yes.
And we don't have rescue squad back up. What's, who's, who's the next back up?
Someone from another county?
Yeah, that's, that's time.
We, we, when we're busy like that and we've got all of our resources extended. Then we call for other counties to come and stand by at the county line. Now, Ash County, for instance, if they're, if all their trucks is outgoing, they have none to send. Um, I, I spoke with Candace in, about two weeks ago and she was asking me what was going on with all of the standbys. And I said, well, we've been really busy. And I said, we've run, we've been running a lot of bad calls. Um, you know, our medical supply i- is, is, is gone in the red because we've run more calls and we've had more patients and we've had to do more treating. Um. But other counties, Wilkes County is good to come and stand by. Surrey County is good to come and stand by. Um, but we have to rely on, uh, resources from outside of the county. It would be a great benefit to have another, one more at least. To have a transport service that's certified and qualified through the state and on our contingency plan. That could do that and do some backup. E- even if it was a convalescent trip. To go to the hospital and take a pres- a patient from the hospital back to Lotus Village or back to the landings, it would benefit us greatly. And I believe that they have stepped up and that they used to wouldn't go out of town tall. And they've, they've actually took a couple of patients out of town for us. So. That's, that's been a, a great improvement and a benefit for us as far as EMS, the squad. The squad, mhm. Rescue squad, they wouldn't transport out of town, but here in recent time, this past year. They've took, I think, two patients to Elkin for us. So. That's been a, um, and they've, they've left from the scene to go and was glad to do it for us. So our relationship, I feel, is pretty good right now.
Well, I'm glad and, and we need a, a great relationship. We've gotta rely on each other.
Yeah.
When I look at this, this extra fifty thousand dollars, what that boils down to. Is we got one rescue squad in this county. They cover the whole county as of now, you know, we got one rescue squad. And they do a good job. They got a lot of paramedics over and stuff that they can do stuff with. And if you look at rescue squad versus fire department, the rescue squad, from what they're asking for us, is the cheapest budget in the county. And if you compare the, the other fire departments with, with them, you know, we're right in line. And, and I think we need, personally, I support it myself. I mean, I just. I wanna be, if I get called into police machine, I know somebody's gonna come get me out. That's about what it boils down to, because the. County ambulance service personnel does not have the equipment or ability to do something like that.
And, and some of the times, the rescue squad has really been invaluable to us for, for transport. Um, you know, we, we go back to the, uh, Jane Tuttle Mountain accident. You know, they were, they were ten patients there. Um, that stretched our resources. The rescue squad kicked in and, and did all they could do for us too. So, you know, that it, it's, it's really a benefit for us to have them. Um, and especially they've, uh, since they have, they've really kicked it up and, and have stepped up and are really, uh, really a benefit for us.
And I know their equipment's just like fire trucks. They're at an awful price, you know? And I know Mr. Long told me that some of that money is gonna help them like pay.
Yes, well, they're, 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 they've got a new truck ordered to help with, with the being able to transport equipment to the scene. Uh, and that's whether it's be a farming accident or an accident on the highway or. You know, a, a ditch collapse, it, it, a structural collapse, any, any type of rescue, um, I believe we can count on it.
Why do you do it? Certainly.
What, uh. They're looking for a new vehicle?
They've got one ordered. They've got one ordered.
Do you know how much?
Not exactly. I don't. Right off you.
Payment is right down on the.
Is that what this is?
Forty-three thousand, yeah.
And what's their fund balance? A hundred and what was it?
One sixty, one fifty-five.
I, I believe Commissioner Wagner had the, the current fund balance.
So the vehicle they're looking, it's forty-three thousand?
That was their payment.
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 That's a payment. How many payments?
That's for a total, total year, it's probably ten year.
That's like a fire truck. Like a yearly payment.
Yeah, probably so, yeah, yeah.
I'm not gonna.
Usually ten year.
You want me?
You like a fire truck's ten year.
Yes.
Especially if we reduce energy.
Yeah.
Ten years for max on any amount.
Yeah, that's right. It's about a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
How much?
A one sixty-one, uh, give or take combined.
You know, I go back to my original question. They're not fully volunteer anymore. Basically, they're asking us to pay for their volunteers if that's, if you're looking at fifty thousand, give or take. I, I would like to see. I, I would like to see, I think it's called a general ledger sheet. And I'd also like to know how many services they've quit providing in the last five years and how many services they're certified in to provide now. And I get, I'm still, I support the rescue squad, but I want to know these numbers as to why they need more money from the county. Every year, they come back with a tremendous request. It gets bigger instead of smaller.
I think that's what happens when you flat fund them for three years in a row.
Uh, we've given ninety and a hundred thousand yearly.
Ninety, ninety consecutively, correct?
Ninety.
Three years, four. We was at thirty-something.
I don't know.
I guarantee we was back in the two thousand nineteen, eighteen, right along in that area.
Mr. Spicer, would you say that the Allegheny County Rescue Squad is an adequate backup to Allegheny EMS?
Yes, sir, I would.
What would it cost Allegheny County to add another ambulance and crew to our budget? In your best estimate?
To add the, the ambulance to, we.
Another vehicle staff.
The equipment. We're, we're just talking about salaries, uh, and benefits. Uh, you're probably looking at, at, um, in the neighborhood of two, three hundred thousand for anything that we have to have extra and extra medical equipment that we'd need.
So if you say three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars to staff that third ambulance, I think a fifty thousand dollar increase is more than warranted and the savings are there.
I think something else going on. I think they would agree with me on this, on paying a couple of people. You're getting fire departments taking the same terms, of paying two people to be on call during the daytime when they don't have many, many volunteers. Everybody's at work. I mean, that's gonna be a coming trend. I don't know how fast, but it's already.
It's already taken hold. Um, the days of, of being able to get volunteers to come and help you is, is slowly going away. This, this benefit for them being there, we have extra trained hands on the scene of medical calls. And sometimes it's needed, sometimes it's not. But when it is needed, they benefit the patient. And the patient is the ones that we have to look at.
Okay, go ahead. Uh, on the wellness center, increasing that by four thousand one hundred?
Can I give you one more? We were asking about squad budget. In twenty twenty-one, the squad budget was twenty-five thousand one hundred and ten dollars. In twenty-two, it went to sixty thousand one hundred and ten dollars. In twenty-three, it went to ninety, and it's been ninety since then.
And every time we sat in there and talked to them about, when we were, when I was on budget committee, they were happy with what they got. And that was recorded to their chief. They were pleased with the amount of money that they were receiving.
But I just, somebody said two thousand nineteen, so I just wanted, we have it back to, to that.
Ninety, 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 ninety.
Go ahead.
Uh, question is on the wellness center. Why is it going back up now when we were trying to reduce it every year?
What's the status of he, he was, was that? Forty-one hundred twenty-five dollars.
He actually requested nine thousand, which was what it used to be about four years ago.
About five or six, it was twenty-five thousand. Now, what's their justification?
Well, I think the conversation with the wellness center was creating that partnership because in this process, the RFQ was moved forward for the pool. So we, the board had voted to go ahead and move forward with that RFQ for the, maybe a pool side at the wellness center. So I think that was part of this conversation.
Well, the request can come out of the BIM money or come out of the Ballard money for the RFQ.
That's correct.
It does have to come out of the wellness center?
No, it doesn't have to come out of the wellness center. But I think the, when Mr. Mason came and talked to us, the conversation was, you know, it was partnership and working together and working toward a goal of that pool.
So what if the pool's not gonna become a reality? I mean, at best Garrison, I can figure for at least two years. What happens to this money? Does it come back to the county?
No, this is just the appropriation that, that's coming from the county for the wellness center.
So they're just looking to gain four thousand on a maybe?
It, it's again, as Mr. Shekley talked about, maybe we're sure some of that reduction.
Good faith.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
We probably need to talk about that forestry service, whether we're gonna do what they ask or we're gonna hold it steady or what?
When you go and see what we had at.
We're gonna see it then.
The forestry service.
On the forest service.
And the sheriff's department.
Okay, good.
Any other questions on the preparation? Not, we're gonna move on. Garrison?
Good.
Good, great.
Yeah.
Continuity department.
These are just funds if needed. And then the unpragated fund balance, a hundred thousand. The thought is that a portion of that, when the TDA and the school system and the county gets together to talk about the auditorium, that there would be some funds in that hundred thousand to go along with that partnership.
Great.
For the heating and cooling system.
Yes, I'm sure. We good on that?
Yep.
Everybody? All right. All the papers are with fire tax fund.
So the fire tax fund, I have refigured all the allocations because we have more homes, we have more vehicles. So they will be between the, the five fire departments. They will be receiving about sixty-five, eight more in fire tax money next year. And at the end of this year, we always, at the end of the fiscal year, we'll do a calculation. And either that last payment will be a little bit less if we get it collected as much as we anticipated or that allocation will be more and the fire departments will get an extra payment.
What was that extra? How much of that extra money you stopped after?
It's in that third line of difference. So between the five fire departments, it's sixty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. But you can see the difference with each fire department too. And it is divided up between property tax and vehicle tax. Cause there's two different taxes that are collected with fire tax money.
And that's the extras they're getting by when they're writing in the column.
Yes, that would be the extra that we're anticipating.
Everybody good with that? Files and boards.
This is one of the budget amendments that actually came to the board lately for this current year. So that income is going up and this is just a pass-through to the school system.
Great. Everybody good with that? Pool funds.
That is what we have in the fund balance from the state capital improvement fund for construction.
Three hundred seventy-five thousand for one.
Yes.
And that's on the Ballard?
Yes, that's it.
And we got an extension for one year or?
No, we have an extension through twenty-nine.
Through when?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
I believe we reviewed that the other day in the break.
I, I just didn't remember it being that long with an extension. Okay, that's good.
Everybody good? Two res and TDA.
And I can answer your questions. By General Statute, the finance officer for the TDA. It has gone down just a little bit because they have, from the previous year, spent all of their fund balance from the previous year, so.
Everybody good with this?
Yep.
If so, we move on over.
So this is your operating budget for Allegheny EMT, where I said there was two portions to Allegheny EMT for the admin is connected to the general fund, which is required with that VOT grant. This is their operating budget and they do have fund balances. So there's no county money included in this budget.
No tax.
Out of general fund.
No tax.
No. It is tax dollars. It's not Allegheny.
They're self-supported.
Yeah, grants.
Grants, state and federal.
Yep. Everybody good?
It's a really good service.
Yes, it do. It sure do. Well-run organization up there. Outdoor Recreation Fund.
That is the fund balance of what we call the BIM money, the BIM donation. So that's the fund balance that's.
Okay, moving on down to fairgrounds. Looks like they're about high.
Well, last year, there was a couple of grants that came from the TDA that was put into.
I worry about the grant situation. With all the tests and stuff. I mean, you just never know. What?
I know on the gravel from last year, that was, I can't remember, we got some COVID money or something. Do we still need more gravel this year? Or, I mean, I mean gravel wears out.
Yeah.
Washes out too.
There, there is a few places where we could use a little extra gravel, yes.
Well, I just, do you have enough money in the budget for, what's a load of gravel now, eight, seven, eight hundred dollars?
Yeah, depend, i- i- we've got the ability to haul gravel ourselves. So we can haul the gravel and all we have to do is pay the cost of the gravel. So, um, we could use some on the, the road that goes from the bridge out to the training center. And there's some in that main parking lot. There's a few thin places there that could use some. Probably about five, six loads would probably be a gracious plenty.
Do you have enough in here?
I think so.
Okay. And the other thing, we were talking, I think, about Daymart building having to have some vinyl or stuff redone on the sides.
Yes.
I look at the, at the show barn, we've, for years and years, we've talked about either aluminum or vinyl, you know, on the, uh, on the, what I call the ease or the yessel port.
Overhanging.
And though, especially on the black building, on the western end, you've painted it numerous times and it's just back like it was. I don't know if you have considered.
We have not put money in the budget specifically for that at this time, no.
I don't know if it's something TDA might be able to help with.
It's, it's worth considering for that, yes. And I agree with you. That, that, that side does suck paint up. And it, it lasts for a good long while, but it, it, um, it's beginning to weather what might well.
Yes.
And, and I could split that money up if they can put some in the gravel and parking repair. We just put a number in there for maintenance and repair. So if you want three thousand or five thousand or something, we can split that.
We can do that later on. Back to the budget table and move around.
Well, it'd be easier to do it than that.
You make records on your own gravel. You call them six, eight tonne.
No, we'll, we'll haul twelve or fourteen tons.
Okay.
We, we'll use, we'll use a big dumpster on the back of the roll-off truck. You know, it's, it's tandem axle truck. We can, we can haul, we could probably haul sixteen tonne on it actually.
So crucial runs of twenty, twenty-six, twenty.
It's expensive, yeah. It's gone up quite a bit. Um, COVID drove everything up. We, 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 you know. But I think, I think by us hauling it, it, it helps with the cost savings. And, and I, I believe we'll have enough.
I just want to figure that up a little bit. Might be some dollars left out if it goes towards buying.
Could be.
Don't let you know.
Could be.
Any further questions?
Black, we're gonna split some of that money, put it in there.
Touch calculator there. Figure it sixteen tons, twenty-eight. You could pay us twenty-eight dollars a tonne.
Hundred and forty-eight dollars a tonne at low.
You need two, three thousand dollars.
Probably. I'd figure six.
So if you look at twenty-five, three thousand, all two, three thousand.
Yeah. But it, it's, it's steel maintenance and repair.
Yeah, it's true. It is.
It is true, but.
We had pulled out the gravel line because we had a gravel issue a couple of years ago.
I will say that I think the maintenance department cut those trees along the bank and everything that was falling on the campers or could have in, on our electrical system. I think they did a great job. They just need another day. And they need to be sure they pick up everything they cut, right, Mr. Schiffling?
Yeah.
But I think y'all did a great job.
Okay, any more questions on fairgrounds before we move on? Next page, opioid sale expense.
That is the predicted allocation for the opioid money to come in next year. And right now, it looks like most of that money will go toward the program with EMS.
That, that dollar value fluctuates, don't it? Fluctuates. Get you a little sense.
Yeah, it's just pass-through money, sorta?
Sorta. But the head department is actually the lead agency to decide. We're the holding party for the money.
They need to decide where it goes.
Correct.
Okay, expenditure, agency drugs.
That is money that comes in for law enforcement and they can use it for extras that they need. That, that is the fund balance as it is right now. But that may change when we go from now and when we get to the budget ordinance. Cause if they use some or they get some more revenue in that, that money may change.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Expenditure fund.
This is actually the registered deeds enhancement fund. There's a little bit of money that goes into this fund that's generated by services that are providing the registered deeds. This is the fund balance, the seventy-three thousand. This, the eleven thousand seven fifty is a prediction of what will be added to that next year. And then they can use this money for preservation of records in the office.
Good. They've done all that preserving records.
They have. And actually, I'm, I'm on the expenditure side, sorry. That eleven thousand seven fifty is what we're, she requested a project to be done. And we budgeted eleven thousand seven fifty in her budget for the county to pay for half of it. And then this is the half that would come out of this.
Good.
I'm sorry.
Oh, good with that?
I still can't remember.
All right, moving on down to transporter.
That is the estimated vehicle tax that will, that's just a pass-through for us. We collected the DMV office and passed through. And then any, um, past property tax before that changed back to Florida, we pay out. That's a thousand dollars.
Next, expenditures, revaluation.
That's your rebound fund and the vitometry project, um, that Rita has talked about. So that's your balance and the rebound. And we, we need to put ninety-two thousand more in with this budget.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Last one, school capital fund.
That is the portion of the sales tax that's put into a separate fund for school capital projects. And the bond expense is actually, we're gonna take four hundred seventy-nine thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and help pay for a portion of that data that the county took from it.
Any questions there? Moving on over, transfer facility.
You're doing well.
The transfer facility? The transfer facility, we have incorporated another full, full time, what we call transportation specialist, there's another full time position in there just to help with expansion and with the influx of people that we've got that have tasks to handle. David actually has one of those current employees that stays on the road, just hauling metal and hauling.
Cars and hauling our recycled materials.
And this new employee will have a C D L also.
Where, i- if they don't have it, when we hire them, we're going to, to have them to get their C D Ls, yes.
That place is so busy, it's unreal. I mean, there, there's not much of a choice.
No.
So we will have to have a future discussion when we get through the R F, I mean, we're through the R F Q process and remember the design and move forward with that. So when we get to the point of R F P with bids and actual construction, we will have to go back and revisit this.
So what, Mr. Shipley, what's your proposal for this guesstimated cost of, it's a million plus, how are we going to come up with that money?
We are, um, when we go into the next, what we need, first thing we need to do is we need to see what the, what the plan evaluation comes up with. And then in the meantime, we can be figuring that out. I think this is the time that we figure that out.
Do we have a fund balance to landfill?
We do have a little bit of fund balance in landfill and I believe we paid cash for that load.
Yeah, we took some of that to do that.
And I believe there's a little over two hundred thousand left.
Two hundred?
Yeah.
But there's nothing in this twenty five, twenty six budget for the expansion or for the creation and repair of the transfer facility?
We have not gotten any money in this for that as of yet. We're, we're still in the process of uh, getting all of the information necessary that it's going to take to, to do this. Um, once we get the new facility built and in operations, then we can take in and remodel the, the old facility to make it for a public use only. But what we need to do is, is we'll, we'll figure in the amount of money that it's going to cost to build the new facility and the amount of money that it's going to cost to do the remodel for the facility that's existing to make it public use at the same time. But we do not have a figure on that as of yet.
I mean, I mean, that could be a substantial amount of money. And are you looking at a budget amendment or in the future or?
Are you asking me? Um, I, you know, this, I've been here five months, so we're trying to figure out, okay, where's, where does the transfer facility stand right now? Who's going to help us figure out where it goes in the future? We're not, we're going through the whole planning process. We're in the planning process part of it right now. So those questions are not being answered at this, at this moment. But, but there are critical questions that need to be answered and need to be, we need to be figuring out how we're going to pay for this over the next few years. Um, and we need to be doing that now. That's part of what needs to be happening now.
We're looking at two phases sort of.
Yeah.
Phase one is what's the cost on phase one?
It's probably going to be one point five million roughly.
And until we get those numbers, we really don't know how.
That's, that's a total guess.
Probably looking a year before they even start, I think.
Most likely.
Probably in the next budget.
Before they actually get started, probably.
Right.
Yes, we got to have more information and I would guess another half a million to bring the other one up to speed to make it accessible for public use. So two million dollars.
It definitely has to be done. It needs to be done in a very organized manner and well thought out planned, planned process and we're trying to get that rolling.
It's expensive to get rid of trash.
It sure is.
Yeah, but again, that's a total guess and we'll have hard, hard numbers um, as the process, as the process or as this uh, project progresses.
When's the next contract, if we're there? People down the mountain?
I think there's two more years.
Two, two years left on this.
I think there's two years left on that contract.
It usually goes up cost of things.
Only yes.
Sure does. Any other questions?
Oh.
If anybody's happy with that, we'll move on over.
The next fund is register deeds and this is just something statutorily we have to keep separate. And this is just a pass through and then at the end of the year, the auditors come in and they look at what is actual revenue for the county and then we do this round of everything from here.
Everybody good?
Yep.
The next one is the actual pass through grant fund that we already have for the town of Florida. So that's my prediction on what's going to be left to distribute to the town next year.
Good.
And then the next one is just the project fund for the high school. That's my projection of what we're going to be uh, paying in next year's construction. And then the last one is that, that's the P S A P fund that's connected directly with our dispatch center. And those are the funds that we receive from the state to support our dispatch center. So that total number has changed just a little bit because we've, we've done a little bit of figuring, so I'll have to go back and get that balance up with, with D S S. So I guess the one question is um, with Daniel's position, y'all were talking about doing something different with that.
We gotta do something with the jail and if we're going to the forest service.
Yeah, we got twenty four thousand that we need to turn up with that man, eight dollars left. And then if there are any more questions?
Anybody have any questions on any of these on the last page here? I'd like to just want to set up, but.
You do, yeah.
Not much to do.
Sixty seven.
Great. Y'all gonna work on that twenty four thousand?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Pliner?
Yep.
We'll be able to find it.
Leave it as is and find twenty four thousand.
What we gonna do on the forest service?
Y'all talking about looking at it to, on the tail end of this thing to see what?
Yeah.
I think you, what do you want, six thousand dollars more?
Yeah, six.
On forest service?
It was six, I think.
They wanted six thousand.
So is there any other places that you get that other than Daniel's assistant?
Yeah, we, that's what we'll be looking at.
Okay.
I'd really not, rather not take it from Daniel, but I think we do need to fund it. The areas that you, you know, that we're talking about with the sheriff. Um, and we can come up with the six thousand if we need to.
And I'll go back and run our reasoning.
I just wanted you to see that, what, what our reasoning was.
Well, nobody's discussed the one cent. Are they having, are we doing the one cent or not? I mean, it ain't really.
It's uh, now, it's, that's part of your budget, ain't it?
It's part of your budget right now.
You know, it ain't, um, two hundred thousand dollar house, we gonna save twenty dollars.
That's about what it is.
Yeah.
What was that word? The one cent reduction in property tax?
Well, if he's going the other way and you put a one cent on it, that twenty, thirty dollars.
Twenty dollars.
People be raising hell about it.
Nineteen to twenty.
See what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
So my thoughts are, and I may be in the minority and it doesn't matter, but I, I go back to that deal about the revow deal. Um, it's, it's going to hit us and I, I propose if we have, if we, we, we get this one cent decrease and then we go into next year and we have a good sound financial year again, do it again, you know, because then the next year is when it's going to hit big time.
That's when you really go out to catch it.
Yeah, so.
That's what, that's what motivated me to.
So if you do one, if you do one this year, one next year, but yeah, you gotta be able to pay your bills, I understand that, but I just, I, I, I see something coming that's going, it's going to break, it's going to bring a lot of conversations and, you know, we can't help what the values did or going, that's nine over six years. So what's going to be left up to the board is trying to how to figure, how to recalibrate it.
Or you just have to catch a percentage.
Yeah. But even in that, the, the, the reality is people's taxes are going to be a little higher, even recalibrating it. I mean, I, I don't see.
Yeah, they are.
They are because it's just a, the reality is our, our properties are a ton more value than they were six years ago.
Yeah.
Um, because we can get a lot more money out of selling it now than we did six years ago. So I just, I just think if we can manage and, you know, the, you know, just to keep it in there, because like I said, if he's raising it in one cent and people was paying thirty dollars more because their taxes were raised, you'd hear about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's the nature of the beast.
So anyway, it's just my thoughts.
Anybody else?
I've got several. Um, starting with the uh, governing bodies of the twenty thousand dollar raise for the commissioners, I, I just don't see that. When we're looking at some of these other agencies that needed money that we weren't able to give, twenty thousand dollar raise, I've never heard of a raise for Allegheny County Commissioners. I've been on the board eleven years now. That, that just staggers me that we would ask for a twenty thousand dollar raise. I would like to see that money go to the recreational softball baseball fields, economic development, ninety thousand dollars, I would like to see that go softball, baseball recreation. Just let me finish.
We done got rid of it.
Already done that.
We done got rid of it, dude.
Yeah, I just want to be sure that.
That's done, yeah.
Um, the chamber of commerce a seventy four percent increase, I can't support that. I need more information about the rescue squads, thirty five percent increase. I need to understand this wellness center about the swimming pool. That thing is not going to come to future. I would say in at least two years, Garrison can either agree or disagree, but I think everybody's talked about a two year life period. Forest service, we're going to take care of it. Thank you. The B D C, uh, I just want to be sure that David's got enough money, you know, to handle all the little paint jobs and everything that's needed there. And I think the veterans park, we talked about a little bit about the expansion of the bricks sidewalk on the left hand side. And I think you can, you said you can take care of that.
I think so.
And the, the drain.
We've got the drain, the drain will be taken care of by next week.
And you're going to look at the possibility of sealing and restriping the parking lot for when you would suggest it's needed.
I'm going to get pricing on that and we're going to take a close look at it.
Where would that come in, in the budget?
We, we've not actually discussed that for the budget for this year. If, if, if it's something that needs to be done right away, we have money in the maintenance line for veterans park and if I have to split it between the veterans park and my maintenance budget, we may can do that. I, I just, I do not know how much it's going to cost yet, so we're going to work towards that.
But that, I mean, but the bricks, getting ready for the bricks.
Getting ready for the bricks, we got, we, we've got that covered.
Uh, right off hand, that, that's uh, I think the budget is, is pretty good. There's some things that I just can't, I can't see if, you know, this one percent, like, like was mentioned, is roughly nineteen or twenty dollars per, per household. It generates about a hundred ninety five to a hundred ninety eight thousand dollars. That would go, even if we split it partially for the baseball softball fields, which as everything that we've been told, you're looking at hundreds and hundreds of children that can use that facility. I think that money would be better spent than some of these line items in the budget. Other than that, uh, you know, we've, we've gone through these things pretty good.
You want to respond, Alan?
No, I would, I'd be good to hear what y'all think. I'm, if you can get that other money's worked out, I think I'm good with what I see.
Great. I'd be good if you can get that worked out.
Garrison?
Good.
I just, the one cent thing, I mean, with our landfill project coming in, I mean, it brings in around a hundred ninety thousand bucks to the county and it is, if you look at a two hundred thousand dollar house and you took the one cent off, it's going to save you about eighteen, twenty bucks. Not a great deal, but it would have a big impact if we keep it in the, words being. And I also look at the factor that I think April could relate to this, how many years we've been at fifty nine cents?
Uh, I believe Rita said six years.
Six years or so.
I'm doing that off the top of my head, but it has been.
But look what we've come through and kept that rate the same. I mean, we've come through COVID and, and all this stuff and seen all these price increases on from fuel to food to everything else you buy and we're still keeping it fifty nine point something. I mean, I think that says a whole lot in, in good administration and good budget, you know, that to be able to do that and keep it at this, at that level. Uh, I'm, I kind of lean towards leaving it for its sake and then readjust when the revow comes along, if that's what it takes to make our budget work. But anyway, that's all I've got.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What were you saying, like not to, not to reduce it?
I would leave it as is at the, at the rate, you know, it's, it's uh.
At fifty nine, seven.
Fifty nine point something, a little under sixty. I just rounded it off to fifty nine, but it is fifty nine in fractions.
It's fifty nine seven.
Right, right.
But I would add, when I was checking and I was trying to look about the surrounding counties, we are one of the highest.
We're a lot higher, Nash.
Yeah, and I think Wilkes or, I think we're even higher, maybe Wilkes is a lot higher, but we are one of the highest rates in, in our area. So.
They got a lot more population there.
Okay.
I think that, I think those areas have a lot more population on a much larger tax basis, why the rates are lower.
Yeah, you, you have a lot. I mean, our tax base is small. Um, they have more revenue because they have more population.
Anybody have anything else? I reckon if not, this concludes the budget process.
So are we going to leave it? I, I just made a direction, are you going to leave it or are you going to take it out?
What we do, what's the board? We didn't make a vote here tonight on that either.
No.
In the works, we can make.
But consensus.
We can get a consensus of how everybody feels.
I'd like to leave it.
Leaving it at fifty one.
Well, I mean, I'd like to leave your budget the way it is.
Garrison?
What's that?
We got, we're just taking a consensus to leave the, the tax rate at fifty nine point seven. Like three in favor of right, Tim, leaving it?
No, I want to, I would like to just, I would like to drop it to one cent.
Well, you want to drop it to one cent, I guess.
Drop it by one cent.
I don't want it. So you want to leave it?
Leaving it.
Leave it. Make it.
I'm, I'm at the pleasure, I'm at the pleasure of the board on this one. Uh, I see both sides of it. Uh, however. However, if if we're going to be lowering the tax rate, I feel it's probably more appropriate to do that in the revow year instead of now. So I'll go with the majority of the board.
Great.
I'm with you all. Everybody's in the majority.
So the recommendation is?
Fifty-nine point seven. Correct, fifty-nine point seven.
Let me ask.
Can I?
About that, putting that money. Towards the transfer station. Would be a good start.
Yeah, I agree.
I would like this, I would like a good conversation about it going, part of it going to these recreation softball, baseball type soccer fields, whatever, whatever you want to call it. Because if we don't do something now, now, I mean, this year's already over with for a practice field. We're pushing ourselves to be ready for a practice field next year. Now Garrison has moved up some of our meetings, but we're going to have to have more support, I think, from the county. And hopefully we can do some grading and stuff during the fall and try to get some of these fields where these children can have a practice field for next spring, next next summer, really. I'd like some of it to go to that endeavor.
I don't disagree with that at all. I think the sooner we get it done, the better. But I don't know about, I don't know what that breakdown looks like. I think if we're going to keep the property tax rate the same, then we fill the short falls of the budget that we've been discussing this whole session with with that money. And then the remainder, maybe we put some of the capital for the transfer facility and then the what's left after that will, because we already got an additional seventy-five thousand dollars going towards this project, right? From 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 our previous discussions. So I don't know about the whole amount, but maybe we start saving for the transfer facility with some of this, with some of this, and then also put it towards the ball fields and whatever we can't come up with in the budget.
I like that idea.
Refresh my memory, see, I was thinking we have requested in Raleigh in our budget for help with the transfer station. Is that, what's that made on that?
That is still, as far as I know, in place and has not been rejected as of yet. We still have high hopes that we're going to at least receive some of the money from the state, but it's not a guarantee.
As a grant?
Yes, as a grant.
Right. Because our, some of our representatives, you know, were not hopeful that any money will be in this in this budget. From my discussions with.
Right, right. And I'm not going to give a point though. I'm I'm still going to stay positive about it. And if not this time, maybe the next round, you know, it's going to take more than a year to get this job done. So maybe if not this time, maybe the next round. And I'm I'm still going to look at the bright part of it.
We really need to stay in contact with our state representatives, because I know what other counties, they still got the pedal on, they put on the gas pedal, you know. We need to really stay in contact.
I think it's going to help, but Bill's going to be at Raleigh at some of these meetings.
It will be, yeah.
Go in and talk.
Scheduled to be there.
Yeah, so.
And ain't anything wrong with Commissioner Pickett up the phone calling Mr. Pickett?
No.
Mr. Heis, Senator Heis. Because the more the squeaky wheel disagrees.
The last time I spoke to Mr. Pickett, he said that he has made sure that Mr. Heis still remembers, you know, because they said there might not be very many special project appropriations, but they still have it as Allegheny County, the one thing that's pretty urgent was the transfer station. He said, you know, I'm, he said, I'm still, it's not just a conversation that Pickett's doing in his committees. He was working, trying to say, hey, you know, Allegheny's still looking for some help with this project. So, you know, I don't know much else to do until, and they're trying to work through, trying to get their budget done at a decent time this year, hoping for a lot more cooperation with the new governor. So I had spoken to him the last couple of weeks, but we're still, it's not completely a no. So it would be nice, it might make it, it'd be helpful. Like you said, if we get some, half a million dollars, you know, which is, if we don't get all the project funded, it would be very much appreciated.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Just thought we'd roll out of here and meet the journey.
Maybe.
Yeah, that's. You know, that's the same. Well, you can take that and make yours head spin, DSS.
The most recent idea I think is going to be.